Okay. December ninth, Board of Education meeting, school board. Business session, first item, report from student representatives.
Actually, we do not have a report.
We don't have a student app. Okay. Next is president's report. Good to see all the board members in attendance. And our next board meeting is Wednesday, January, I think? Yeah, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Okay. Moving on to administrative reports. Item A, report on COVID-19 response update.
Just want to take a few minutes and give you a few updates. If you haven't been able to, if you go to our website, on the homepage now, there is a dashboard button, and you can see what our current status is for positive cases within the district. The data is both staff and students combined data. So, current positive cases, current students in quarantine. And we update that almost daily. It might not always be exactly every day, but it's, you know, if we don't have a big data change, we may not update it. But that, we put on there right before Thanksgiving. Just, you know, and to remind everybody, somebody in isolation is somebody who's positive for COVID-19, and they have to do a minimum of ten days from the start of symptoms, or if no symptoms, ten days when they've tested positive. A lot of people don't understand, it's ten days from the start of symptoms. So, sometimes people who are in isolation and COVID-positive, and oftentimes, they are returning before people who are in quarantine, and quarantine is that idea that you are in close contact. Wood County Health, and the reason I wanted to bring that up is, Wood County Health this week updated their quarantine information, and they will be allowing an early release from quarantine at ten days, or possibly seven days. There's some very specific guidelines that they have in place that we're going to work with them on in terms of doing that. Those guidelines deal with, if it's a seven-day early release, you have to test negative either on day six or day seven, at the earliest day six or day seven, in order to get potentially released after seven days from quarantine, and you have to have no symptoms. If you have any symptoms that started at any point, even if you test negative, you're still under the fourteen-day quarantine rule. At ten days, they will release you early if you've had no symptoms whatsoever. You don't have to have a test necessarily, but you do have to, you have to have been monitoring for symptoms. You have to show that you're going to continue to monitor for symptoms, and some other pieces. Just to give you an example, the data they sent with us, or sent to us on this, the difference in the percent, the risk of transmission percentage. At fourteen days, the risk of transmitting COVID is, according to the CDC, point one percent. So, it's less than a percent. The risk at ten days of transmitting COVID is one point four percent. So, it's just over a percent. So, that's, you know, and then, that actually go to, if you do the testing, and some of those things, at ten days, if you do the testing and you're negative, that actually goes down even further than seven days. But that's, you know, so the whole idea is, they want more people to take the quarantining seriously. So, part of that was, when you're talking about a one percent chance of transmitting COVID, or a point one percent chance, I think the idea was that data is pretty small data, or pretty, you know, those are pretty small risk percentages. You know, we talked as a county set of district administrators on this quite a bit, with the county. So, here's the thought process that I had, because there are some schools, I know in Clark County that are not adopting this, and a few other places, and they're keeping with the fourteen-day quarantine. Here, the problem I saw in this, and I think where Wood County was at with this, was, if Wood County releases a student at ten days, but the school says no, but that student's going down and working at Subway, or working at Walmart, or wherever, why don't we have that student in school? So, we've, we're working with Wood County, moving forward with this early release of quarantine, under the guidelines they've given us. We're going to assist them with, if there are kids who are in the district, we're basically going to help Wood County release them from quarantine. So, as I can tell you, my discussion with Wood County is, they've been inundated with calls. I asked them this morning, are those calls from kids from Fort Edwards, or Fort Edwards connections? They said, actually, no. Part of that is, we worked with Wood County and said that we can't do some of the releasing through our health staff. They will work with Wood County, contact Wood County, and make sure Wood County has all that information. But, you know, so we're, we're just trying to work hand in hand with them, and get people back into school if it's safe and they're able to. You know, and that's where we're at with that piece.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I know, so the testing, there's all sorts of different rapid tests, are there certain tests that goes with that?
Either test. So, either the PCR test or the rapid, either one is, they're going to take either one.
Awesome, thanks.
Yep. We did notify parents of that change on Monday, and we've had, our health staff started reaching out to some parents, just, you know, after that information went out on Monday, and talking to them about how we're going to work this moving forward, so, for some of our current quarantines. If you were to look right now at our dashboard, you'd see we do have a high quarantine number at the middle school, high school. Majority of that's out of the high school, and the majority of that actually runs out of our athletic programs at the moment, due to a couple of close contacts that happen within those programs. I do want to explain just a little bit about how athletics is moving forward on that. In the advice we've been given by Wood County and by the WIA, if we have a basketball team that's playing basketball, and let's say, a member of the opposing team tests positive for COVID at some point within that window, that they could have exposed our students, any player who was on the court during that game, if that player was on the court from the other team, any player who was on the court during that game is considered a close contact. That's, end of story. That's where they're going, they're not going back and reviewing film to make sure that Suzie was on the court when Betty was, no. Everybody who played in the game is close contact. If you sat at the bench and never stepped on the court, if you were a coach, not necessarily. But if you were in that game, you're going to be a close contact. It's just less confusion, less having to debate who, who was on when and how many minutes. And that, keep in mind, we do talk about fifteen minutes within six feet, but in a game of basketball, because you're probably touching one another at some point, you're a close contact. We've reviewed some of our basketball procedures and things as well, and, and, you know, we've tightened a bit up on that, just to, again, make sure that we're doing everything that we can, just like we did after our closure, our middle school, high school closure. We've tightened up some of our procedures there, you know, and we continue to do that. You know, the last comments I'm just going to make on our response and where things are at, virtual Wednesdays. So, after today, we have two virtual Wednesdays scheduled. It'd be next Wednesday, and then again on January sixth. We're planning to end the first semester with a full week, so that we get, you know, things wrapped up, and loose ends tied up, to end that first semester. We're also planning at this point to begin the second semester with some full weeks. Our guidance staff has worked really hard. One of the things that we ran into in first semester was, we had teachers without prep days, some days. They've worked really hard at the moment. We think everybody's got to prep every day, for the most part, almost. So, they've been working really hard to address some of those problems that were within our schedule. And so, at least to start that second semester, or we're not planning on starting with virtual Wednesdays. Again, I would look at that as even being, that gets our kids in the building, acclimated to the classes they're in. I would say, the earliest I would bring this back to the board as a possibility of any continuation would be in February, so, at this point. You know, we've, you know, the staff has continued to work wonders and work well. I know we've still encountered challenges, almost on a daily basis at times. And, but the staff has continued to work through those. And I'm going to make a comment that one of our teachers made to me today. We were talking about behavior, just general student behavior. And the teacher said, you know what? And this is a high school teacher, and he teaches more of our older junior, senior population. Says, I think the kids really get that, in order to be here, and in order to make school go, they just got to do what we're asking them to do right now. And, so, you know, I know it's been hard on the students as well, and they've had to adjust to a lot of changes. So, but that's, that is my report on the, on our response as of the moment.
All right, thank you. Next item is report on elementary card activity, Principal Christie.
Okay, um, every year, we do some sort of student, I don't know how to say project, but one, something that we do for an activity around the holidays. So, this year, we decided that each grade level is going to make holiday cards, and we are going to send them to different ICU units, to nurses and doctors, so they can put them up around their ICU units in Rapids Marshfield, Wausau, just thanking them for everything they're doing, and wishing them a happy holiday, so that they have a little, little sunshine and, you know, happiness, and, you know, student-created holiday cards in their, in their unit where they work. So, in the past, we have done military, since things, you know, military personnel and so on and so forth. So, this year, we thought sending to different ICU units around our area would be appropriate, thanking all those doctors and nurses for all the hard work they do, and just so they could post those in their ICU. In addition, we are also doing holiday dress-up days, where on the, the three days before Christmas break, we're going to have a Dress Your Best Day on the twenty-first, fancy clothes, dress your best. Tuesday, holiday shirt or silly Christmas shirt, we're not calling it ugly Christmas shirt, because we don't want to get anybody, you know, so silly Christmas sweater. And then, on Wednesday, comfy clothes or Christmas jammies day. So, we can't unfortunately do our, you know, annual bowling trip with our fourth graders this year, but we're going to do some, a couple of other things to try to make it fun and give the kids some, some way to celebrate. So, and in addition to that, it's not on my report agenda, but I also wanted to point your attention, if you haven't already seen it, to our library donor wall. Doris Lund Back is our, she owns CC Designs, and she is the one that put this together for us. And all of our library donors' names are on there, along with the butterflies that symbolized their donation levels and their names. So, she came in and did that for us, and put it together, and I think it's a really nice addition to our library, and fits our Monarch Fort Edwards theme, and, and I really like how it turned out. So, I thought that that was, that's a nice addition. And we're, we're talking about continuing with that theme as we kind of move our way around the library, as, as we progress with more, more decor, as the library continues to, to fill out. So, we have some over here, as we get these little decals and things like that. So, I thought it was a very nice addition, and she did a wonderful job on that, so, it's beautiful.
Yes, the wall looks very nice. And I thought the card idea is excellent, excellent idea. All right. Next is report on middle, high school update.
I think I'm all over the place today. Just to add to Kyle's COVID conversation, we, since we came back, I forget when I last reported, we've been in and out. I think that our teachers are really getting good about going in and out. Since we came back, we tightened up some things in the middle school for lunch and recess, which will, if we have to exclude kids, or if we have a positive, it'll avoid more students leaving. The dashboard will change dramatically over this Friday and Monday. Everybody doesn't understand the procedure, and again, we're helping the health department, because our goal is, that dashboard will probably go down from, I think, forty, fifty kids to maybe ten by doing this. And that percent, when I read that, I'm like, that is so low. That I hope people take advantage of that, even though they still have to monitor, they can be in the classroom learning. Because that's a whole, if you think of fourteen days, sometimes depending on how it falls, it's like two weekends and almost two weeks. So, this will help us tremendously, like with units and tests and quizzes and all of that. So, that's really exciting. Like I said, this Friday will be chaotic in the morning, but we'll, we'll figure it out. We've figured everything else out so far this year. We're doing modified Christmas activities, we feel terrible, we're not going to the theater. We're talking about doing, like, games or activities or movies in our cohorts, because somebody said, well, we can put them all in the gym. Well, we can't do that. So, we're talking about maybe even ordering treats from them and bringing it into the school, and trying to modify in the cohorts they'll still be, but doing something so the kids get some kind of fun. Thanks to Jeanne Bruner and Ecology Club, we have a Christmas tree up and lit, and on Monday morning, it just made a, Monday, Friday, it just made a difference. Like, kids were like, ah, because we cleaned and simplified and gotten rid of anything we don't need. And so, she was debating, you know, should we put it up? We said, yes, that's one thing we need. So, it's, it's just kind of a simple little thing that everybody likes. We are finalizing the class offerings, we'll talk about that later today. Like Kyle said, we found a way, and everybody's scheduled to give a little bit of relief or a little stress-free for the, for the teachers. The kids are getting used to the, the four periods a day, it's long. We are already, I have a principals meeting today, I always have it on Wednesdays, we have board meetings. I reached out to my principals, Jen is reaching out to the counselors. We're looking at some things that we really like, that we learned about, and we're more efficient and are working into next year. So, we're even looking at, like, using some of this, like, that's a good part of it, some of the scheduling pieces into next year. So, we'll talk about that later. We're revamping right now the music department to help them all. Right now, we were rotating them, they can't sing, they can't, they, they're not playing, and trying to do their best. So, we're going to help them all for next semester and do some different rotations. And they've gotten some different curriculum, they're trying to be as creative as they can be, and keep the interest in the music department. And that's about it. Come spring, we're going to use some of these procedures I've talked about. And the last thing, and I know you know this, and, and I know this is public, so a lot of people can hear, and you've said this, but it's the end of the year, end of the semester, I just, we went in, in quarantine, out of quarantine. I, I just want to thank everybody, like, the teachers have gotten so good about this. I used to tell the parents, please give the teachers twenty-four hours to put your kid on, and the virtual list, and to give them the Google documents and everything, and they're doing this within, like, hours. They're doing a great job about it. I go down to the lunchroom and ask Lisa Moll, you know, can you guys put together three lunches, because so-and-so is leaving, or whatever, and they're at the office door before the kids are leaving, like, everybody. And the, this, the school's looking clean, and if it wasn't for all the people subbing, you know, like, the other day, I woke up, there's days that we hit our peak, and I think, oh, no. Monday, Tuesday was, we were looking for five people, like, in a half an hour. And we filled those, you know, like, we think, I think, how close are we? Am I going to go down to Kyle, and he's going to be calling all of you? And people just jumped in and subbed, and we opened up, and I don't think the kids knew any different walking in the morning, like, oh, our teachers are here, oh, so-and-so is on Zoom, or, you know, like, it's become our new reality. Like, when a kid walks in and they see the teacher up on Zoom, they don't even ask anymore, like, well, this is how we're learning today. And we just do our thing, so, I just, and I think you know this, but, again, it's those days, like, Monday or Tuesday, that hit you, and, and we're doing well, so.
Thank you.
Next item is questions and comments from people in attendance. Anyone wish to comment? No, seeing none. Move on to the consent agenda. Number eight, seek approval to minutes of the past meeting, November eleventh, twenty twenty. Is there a motion? Got a motion and a second, a discussion. Although in the favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Although opposed, motion carried. Number nine, consider approval of financial reports. Do we have a report on the gifts?
Yes, we do. Um, we received a bag of hats and mittens here in the elementary school from Nicole Martenson family. Marshall and Pat Dealer Advice Fund, through Encourage, has donated two hundred dollars to support the families, Helping Families program. Mr. Claire Surles donated one hundred dollars to the Christmas Cheer program. And the NACU Support Edwards Knights of Columbus donated a hundred and seventy-five dollars for the Codes for Kids program.
I would like to, you've probably seen it, and we'll do formal recognitions in, in January. The Lions Club, if you look on our Facebook, gave a significant contribution, and again, we'll do a formal recognition in, in January. So did the United Methodist Church as well. As, as well as this morning, a gift that we're going to receive, and I will announce this, it was announced this morning. The Alexander Foundation is giving us eighteen thousand, approximately eighteen thousand dollars to put any other finishing touches pretty much onto this auditorium project that we need to. So, they have been by our side since day one of trying to get the auditorium in good shape. And this was unsolicited, unasked for this time around, and they were out of their generosity, and it's something they felt strongly to do, help us put some of the finishing touches on some of the sound system components that were final phase things that we had kind of set aside, and some other pieces in there. So, we're excited to hear that news this morning, that was, that's something that was expected, so.
All right, with that, seek a motion to approve financial report. Second. Motion on the second, in discussion. Seeing none, although in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Although opposed, say nay. Motion carried. There's no unfinished business tonight, so we move on to new business. Number ten, consider approval of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two course description changes.
I'm going to have Mrs. Schroeder comment on that and give you the recommendations, but I'm going to reserve a minute at the end of that conversations for some comments for me, on a couple of other items we're working on in that realm.
I think, if you look at the changes at a glance, they're pretty self-explanatory, Mrs. Mead does a good job of doing that. So, all the red was just little things that the teachers changed about the curriculum. We're realigning some courses you knew from last year, especially science, like the biology, the physical science. And the teachers are offering some new courses. If, if the class, there's not a lot of interest in it, and that's where we're going with a further discussion, you know, we take a look at it and say, you know, what are the kids interested in? So, you can see, there were some new science courses that our science teacher, teachers are involved in. I think the bulk of the changes were in the physical education. So, we've had Mr. Thomas for a couple of years, and we've always talked about this, that this was a perfect time for him to start doing this. Giving, letting the freshmen do regular FIAID and weightlifting and training, and then offering the upper, rather than taking another FIAID class, and the kids just say, FIAID, FIAID. Offering the upperclassmen some choices. A more, you saw that a couple of them are, or one of them is more competitive, because, and we've always talked about this, there's a big difference with physical ability, athletic ability between a senior, maybe a male senior, and maybe a small, young freshman. Like, that's a big difference when they're playing competitive sports, and sometimes we have issues physically, you know, like, they're playing in the gym, and so, he wanted to look for somebody that wants that competitive setting, to have that class, and then, looking at more life skills, like in the, you know, for their lifetime, like golf, and we've talked about that. So, I, I think the kids will start to weed out and pick out what they're interested in, and I think they'll really like that. And he wants to do more, but we thought we would start here. Then, the nutrition and healthy living, the mental health course, we know that there's a need for that. So, this is our first start to start addressing that, and changing up the health issue, you know, mental health issues there, that were, they were interested in getting the kids involved in. Band, again, we've got a couple of new band, choir teacher, just, you know, a couple of years old, trying to put a little personalization or ownership in their program. And I think that was about it.
Well, there's a couple of questions.
Okay, and maybe Jen will be able to help me too. I was, I was wondering why I'm, she could, yeah, she'll help you.
Um, I noticed you flipped the suggested order for physical science and biology. Is there some?
So, we actually did that this year, right now, all of the freshmen and sophomore, because we have two science teachers are teaching biology.
That's more of a staffing issue?
No, not staffing.
This really has to do with how math is offered. And the math that lines up better for the physical science comes in the sophomore. By the time, the algebra that they would take as a freshman will help them in the physical sciences as a sophomore. It really has to do with that math piece and...
And also, physical science leading into chemistry would be the other reason.
Yes.
It just made more sense as a progression for both science and math. So, I think, actually, our science teachers are the ones who raised this concern, and a lot of other districts actually do it the way we're switching to because of these reasons. So, you know, they recognize that it made more sense this way, and need a case for it, and that's what's switching.
So, next year, we'll just have those, them move up, and it won't change any position.
Yeah, we'll be in the right.
They'll be good to go.
The other question I had, I focused on social studies, because that's what I taught, but, you know, it's true in, in English and in science, and other classes too. When we're offering a greater number of half-credit, one semester choice classes, especially at the junior and senior level, are these classes offered on, on a demand basis? Are they offered on some sort of location every fourth semester this class meets? Is there, is there some, you know?
Yes and yes.
Okay. If I was a, if I was an incoming student, looking at this course description book, and I, I was trying to plan a, a four-year projected curriculum for myself, how would I know, short of, for example, talking to Mr. Miller, when I could take the, the American Government class, or the Holocaust class, or the, the whatever? And speaking of American government, there's a drumbeat out there to, to try to focus more attention on civics, and more attention on, on the public's understanding of how government works, especially in light of, shall we politely say, recent events. Is there a way that we could try to emphasize and, and focus upon, besides offering a half-credit class that a lot of people end up not taking? Is there any way we could try to find a way to, to encourage more understanding of our governmental processes, our elections, our, our, just how this works, we're, we're ebbishly ignorant in terms of civics?
So, we do, at those upper levels, those are typically rotated through. And so, there's some that are this year, and some that are next year.
Right.
Or semester-to-semester rotation. And there is, and it depends whether it's science or social studies, how they're rotated, but they do have some level of rotation of that, those classes are offered in. The percentage of our kids taking American government is pretty high.
Pretty high, yeah. And I would say...
I'm glad to hear that.
Tim's classes in the course description book, I think they're pretty much all offered, because he does a phenomenal job. He's been doing blended learning for a couple of years. So, when we switched over, this was nothing new to him. For example, polyecon and microecon, he offers, kids are taking it at the same time in his classroom because he blended it. So, he's, he's amazing as far as offering what kids want. We also have kids that'll go to him and say, I'm interested in the AP exam, and he offers independent studies. He really meets the students' needs. Primarily, I would say, when we schedule, what the students want drives the schedule.
Okay.
You know, we try to, we try to give the kids what they want, and it, you know, Steve Burnell is a good one to talk about. One year, his classes might look completely different from the next year, because it's based on what the students are interested in, and if you look probably three years ago compared to now, introductory classes are real similar, but it, it does change, and he's another one that's very good. He has a finger on what the kids want and what they're interested in. He's another one that's phenomenal with independent studies. So, we're really lucky with our teaching staff, that I think our kids are able to talk to the teachers and get what they're interested in.
So, this probably leads into...
Yes.
The next, the piece that I wanted to add to Donna's course description book. We may come to you in January... We may come to you in January with some amendments to this based on some information that came to us really within the last day. So as you're, as you're aware, you, you authorize the Start College Now students. That's a program we have to offer, we offer it. This year, we have the most participation we've ever had for a couple of reasons. One, some of that we have pushed, especially to, to students who are able to, that ability to get out and try some other things, especially with COVID, not having to necessarily be in the school building. The other piece is, it's just simply more popular for kids to do this now. It's a savings to them down the road in terms of credits. So if they go to Mid-State and take, if they take developmental psychology at Mid-State, that's a psych class in a college they may not have to take. We ultimately pay that bill. So we get billed by Mid-State for that and we pay that bill. We have had some conversations with Mid-State that have led us to a path of, we've just recently asked three or four of our teachers, I'm going to ask a couple more tomorrow, in the core areas, mathematics, social studies, English, science, to complete an audit for Mid-State to determine whether or not those teachers have the ability to teach some of those courses as dual credit courses where we teach them in-house, but they get the Mid-State credit, very similar to some things that Steve Burnell already does, that Marissa Riddishke already is, that Gary Spencer already does. But they might be more in the core areas, developmental psychology, statistics. Some of those classes that we could have kids stay on campus, take a dual credit, and now we're not paying Mid-State for that credit. So the kicker is, some of these teachers may need to take a few more credits. Right now, there's a grant program that will pay for some of those credits. So we're, we don't know if any of our staff are able to or not. There probably are. It's just how close are they to being able to do it? And whether or not they want to jump down, if they got to take sixteen credits or three credits or eight credits? We don't know.
Well, do you know if, if what used to be DKE or Technical College Certification still requires two years of outside of education work experience?
I, that, I'm not sure of.
That was, when, when Sue left her position in the Nacusa District and went to work at Mid-State, she had to show that she had worked at least two years outside, outside of an educational setting in a, in a traditional quote job, other than teaching.
Each area is going to be, yeah, I understand what you're asking now. Each area is going to be different with that and what they require.
Okay.
So, and less so for the acad, what you would call those core academics, the math, the social studies and the science. Probably more so in the, in like family consumer education area or a technical area, but not even there. They've, they've loosened some of that up, but they've also, at the same time, there are requirements they do have to meet, so. Yeah, so, but we're thinking, you know, ultimately, these programs are just going to become more popular. And if we have some teachers who we can get on this now, next fall, we potentially could have a class or two that becomes a dual credit class that we've never offered before that, rather than sending, I, I think right now we have eight students potentially in statistics and eight students in developmental psych and eight students in sociology. Rather than sending them to Mid-State to do it and paying Mid-State all kinds of money, keep them in-house.
Great.
So.
That's wonderful. That's a really great opportunity.
So that is the only caveat to Donna's presentation that I would make is we may come to you and ask for some further course, course authorization.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the course description changes? A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion is approved. Next item is review of school violence drill, middle high school.
Before you read this, it's very simple. We, we went simple. We modified it, modified it to prevent any contacts, like they didn't leave their rooms situation, left them in their room. Last year, we did a full out, leaving the room, meeting outside, you know, all, all of those things. We didn't do that this year. I did bring in Officer Drew and Officer Abbott. Like I said, you probably read the whole thing. We focused on, one, the fifth graders because they were new to that building and they had lots of questions and maybe a little bit of fear. You know, the seniors have done this time in and time out, just a little different situation. And there are not a lot of them there sometimes. The only further discussion that I, that I was starting to call about, and I think I'm going to revisit or readdress some. First year, first time this ever happened, we had virtual students on. So while this was a drill, those students were on. And again, Mr. Abbott, Mr. Drew and myself went to every room and answered questions. Some of the teachers said, this is a drill and you're, you know, you're getting off right now. And some of them left them on in the discussion. So I just want to find a couple more details about that. You know, even my daughter was at home and said, Mom, I freaked out when I heard that. And then I heard him say, practice, practice, you know? So we're, I, I just want a little bit more information to, to, so we can review again with the kids what we do in that situation, you know? So those kids virtually, if it is a, a bad situation, they, they don't need to be on or see that or view it or, you know, and how do we not panic them or scare them? Kids with phones now, you know, help. So we've, we've got to talk about that again. Otherwise, everything went fine.
Thank you. Next item is consider approval of change in supplemental incentive compensation program.
As, as I presented in a closed session, just one small adjustment to the supplemental program. And then additionally, as we're putting that program into place, temporarily suspending our incentive program for this year for teaching staff and support staff. There's really a lot of the opportunities that teachers would have are not going to be there. And so that program really would not make sense to move it forward. As well with the support staff, we've not really had the time to concentrate on the goal setting the way we would have liked to this year. Just not a practical part of that program at the moment, so.
All right, is there a motion?
A motion.
A motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Next item, consider approval of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one compensation guide.
Really, the only change would, the biggest change would be adding in the, the, just that language on suspending those programs. Would be the biggest change to the compensation guide, along with that, just a couple of small dollar amount changes to the substitute pays.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve the compensation guide, motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carried. Item fourteen, opportunity for individual board member comment. Kathy.
I just would like to thank all the individuals and the organizations that have been so generous to our school district. We are really fortunate to have these generous people and organizations in our midst.
All right, thank you. I wish the members of board and the employees and staff of the district, families and children of the district a Merry Christmas. Thank everybody for their patience and their diligence and their hard work. The, the response, I keep saying this every month, the response that everybody has had for this dumpster fire on a runaway freight train over here has, has been remarkable. And we cannot, we cannot appreciate you enough. Enjoy your, enjoy your time off, do what you can to stay safe. Get vaccinated, see what you can get.
Carrie.
Kathy and Leo stated that pretty well. It is really nice to be in this community and part of this community with all the support that's shown throughout by everybody. So just thanks to everybody out there that's done such a great job in supporting our, our school and our, our district.
Same to whatever they have with Kathy and Leo and Carrie said. I mean, couldn't do without the great people. Obviously, a lot of good things are getting back in motion slowly. You know, basketball is, is going, we ended up with volleyball and football got done. And I know the other activities are trying to do the best they can to get going. So good to see them active, good to see kids out there. They need those activities to stay motivated, go to school. Thanks to all the teachers, all the support they do for the kids. And have a good holiday and New Year and get back next year. It's good to see we're moving away from virtual Wednesday. So obviously, hopefully, we can just keep improving everything we do and have a good second semester.
I don't think anybody's going to regret not writing twenty twenty in their checks and in their bills anymore.
Yeah, I just wish, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and, and good health. Just good to be back to normal and feeling, feeling normal, so. And I also, at my house, I got a Christmas card from Project Search in Lincoln High School. I'll pass it around. People have kids did Project Search in the past.
In fact, right when COVID hit and we started the shutdowns, we had planned a presentation by Project Search for you because we'd had a couple of students go through the program. We were going to have a student come back and present the program ideas. Unfortunately, that obviously didn't happen, so.
So are any of these our students?
I think that's this year's.
Oh.
And we do not have one right now. We do not have a student in Project Search, but the last two years we have.
So I wish everyone a good health.
And the next board meeting is Wednesday, January thirteenth. Do you want to set up February? February tenth?
Yeah.
February tenth, twenty twenty-one. Let's do that meeting. So we'll take a little break and then we're going to do some reading of outstanding calls.
All you really have to do, swing your tables around and I'll bring it up on the, on the overhead.